City Council Meeting of Wednesday, November 19th at 6:30 PM. Members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, and Tru.
I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 5th Council Meeting and bills for payment on November 21st and 26th, 2025. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Tru, and Witherspoon.
Is there anyone here to speak on repository sale?
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, I put a bid on two properties, two, uh, it's better. I put a bid on two properties, two vacant lots. One on the East 26th Street, uh, right across the number 1743, close to Downing Avenue. Uh, it's an empty lot. It's clean. Uh, for the both, I already have contacted a couple of companies that will help to, uh, maintain that, uh, the lots clean. Uh, the intention is to put them back, uh, on the market for sale for some construction companies. Uh, the second one is on Buffalo Road, uh, close to McCain Street. Uh, this one is naturally wooded yet. Uh, this company is going to clean the whole, the whole lot for me. Uh, do I live near the property? No, I'm from New Jersey. And, uh, no structures there. They are vacant. Yes, we provide the maintenance. And no, I haven't had any code violations before.
Could you tell us your name?
My name is Mirillo. Mirillo, M R I L L O. Thank you. Is that all?
So you hope to maintain the property until you're able to turn around and sell it?
Yes. I have already contacted two companies that, uh, are giving me prices on it.
Okay, just make sure that those companies reach out to the code enfor- well, not code enforcement, but the permitted air, you know, to know what they can.
Yeah, that was the first, my first question to them, if they are familiar with the codes and everything.
Any other questions from Council? We will not vote on that tonight. We will vote on it at the next meeting.
Can I ask just one follow-up question? I apologize. Being from New Jersey, what is just your interest in those, those properties?
I, I started investing in tax deed and tax lien, uh, properties. And, uh, this is my first time in Erie County, but I'm very interested in the area. And, uh, I know people who live here that, so I knew the, uh, the city before. It's my first time on the repository list.
So the first time owning in Erie?
Yes.
Okay. How many properties do you own outside of?
In New Jersey, I own two properties, not in the, uh, also already out for sale. Not in, uh, but over there is tax lien, so it's the whole process. You have to foreclose on properties.
Okay.
And, uh, but in Pennsylvanian State alone is the first time.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Council? We will not vote on that tonight. We will vote on it at our next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your attention.
Are there anyone else to speak on repository sales? Is there anyone else to be, speak on repository sales? Is there anyone else to speak on repository sales? Hearing none?
Mr. President, I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a public hearing at around seven. Um, I don't know if the stenographer is here yet, but we will stop the meeting, the business part, and go right into the public hearing at that time.
Public comments? Is anyone would like to speak? Please come to the podium. You have five minutes. Please give us your name and municipality.
My name is Ruco Jancy. I reside in Lawrence Park, um, and I am here tonight as the president and CEO of the zoo. Uh, good evening, everyone. Good evening, uh, Council President and members of Council. Uh, I want to begin by expressing my and the zoo's sincere gratitude to City Council for your continued support. Uh, over the past several months, we've worked through important conversations about our future, and your engagement, your thoughtful questions, and your commitment to Erie's long-term success have meant a great deal to us. We are truly excited as we look ahead to the bright future partnering with Erie Events, and this partnership represents a meaningful opportunity not only to strengthen our operations, but contribute even more significantly to the growth and vitality of our community. It is inspiring to know that this collaboration will help us build something that further benefits our animals, our staff, our residents, our visitors, and the entire region for years to come. I also want to extend a heartfelt thank you to everyone who has spoken in support of us, both across the region and throughout previous council meetings. In particular, and if you'll remember with me, I want to recognize Remy, a young friend who stood before you in the August meeting and shared how much the zoo means to him. A young friend who joined our junior zookeeper program, raised hundreds of dollars for the zoo by selling candy, and who is now a proud member of our volunteer program. I also want to thank the citizens who came to speak on matters greatly important to them, matters that impact their communities and families. And on that August day, those who chose to dedicate a few precious moments at the podium here to express their support of the zoo. To everyone, your voices, your encouragement, and your belief in our mission, a mission rooted in conservation, education, and stewardship of the natural world, has been incredibly moving, and we speak of it often at the zoo. It is clear that the people across Erie care deeply about their zoo, the work we do, and the positive impact we create together. As you know, we remain fully committed to working collaboratively with the city, with Erie Events, and with all our partners to ensure that the next chapter is one defined by unity, innovation, and shared success. We value the trust that you've placed in us, and on behalf of the entire zoo family, we thank you once again for your support, your time, and your commitment to our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tina Hyotes. I live in the city of Erie, and I have two topics. The first one is on the Marcello Woodard situation. Spent over four months. Justice is supposed to be blind, but it's not supposed to be silent. The family, the community are still being met with unanswered questions. Silence in the face of a loss of life is not neutrality. It is neglect, and it needs to stop. This family needs answers. This family is hurting. This family deserves compassion, even if it's nothing but. There's nothing new to tell you yet. They do not need to be, continue to be met with silence. The second topic that I want to bring up is the fact that right after the election, it dropped in the Erie news, that taxes and sewer rates were going to be going up. I feel like that's something that should have been put out there way before then, because that's something that the voters in the city of Erie could have asked the people running for election, what their thoughts were on that and where they stood. We need to have more financial responsibility in this city, and we need to have city council and elected city members who are more transparent and open with the people that they ask for their vote each and every election cycle.
Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepper, and I live in the city of Erie, and I have a couple of issues. I, I agree that we need to have, um, whoever the "we" is, I don't know how much the city's involved, but certainly the district attorney and the county judicial system needs to do more to, um, show that something is happening. But it seems like it's five years since I was aware of talk about a, um, civilian police review board, and I don't think we have one in this city. So what's happening with that? Now I'm going to talk about my usual wintertime topics of pedestrian access in the wintertime. I'm, I'm pleased that the city, um, is looking ahead and did contract with some private companies to do plowing. Nevertheless, neither the city's plows nor these contractors should be plowing in such a way as to block the intersections, to block the, the sidewalk crossings, to block access to the pedestrian push buttons. That if I, Brown Street, Brown Avenue is a classic example of that, that almost all the corners are inaccessible. In downtown, we've seen that, and you can't get to the push buttons because there's snow blocking it. So something needs to be figured. If there, if there isn't a clear place to put the snow, they need to designate. We have all these vacant lots and stuff. The other thing is, commercial entities, churches, schools, city organizations should not be allowed to block the sidewalk when clearing their parking lots. Teresa's on Green Garden, a place over on Elmwood and 26th. I can bet they will do it again this year. They will block the sidewalk to clear their parking lots. They should not be allowed to do that. If you, if the city can have somebody going around citing people when their grass is more than 12 inches, they can have somebody going around citing businesses who block sidewalks when they're clearing their driveways. And I, I don't talk about residential people who don't clear their sidewalks, but 38th Street, 26th Street, 12th Street, the sidewalks are never clear, but nobody cites them. Yet we cite people if the grass is over 12 inches. That's, that's an inconsistent, um, discrimination against residential people and favoring the commercial sector. One more thing, I think that there is a disparity in how we enforce the time limits on sidewalk closures for construction. How long does Erie Insurance get to close the sidewalks around French Street and Sixth Street and, um, and Holland? That they, they have a roving thing, and it's been going on for months and months. And there's a maximum 180-day sidewalk closure. And one more thing, with Avalon, they don't need to have the sidewalk closed seven days a week, 24 hours a day. There's nothing dangerous there now. Maybe during the daytime, but they could keep the sidewalk open during the weekend and at night. There's lots of people who would like to be able to walk down 10th Street. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jerry Roberts, lifelong resident of the city of Erie, Pennsylvania. I'm here for Justice for Cello. Um, I don't know if people think that, uh, we are going anywhere, but we're not. If they think December and January, the snow months, that's going to slow us down, please spread the word that we're not stopping. I don't know if they think that we're going to be satisfied with a charge of anything less than murder. We won't be. Manslaughter is not an option. Please spread that word to whoever. And for those of you that supported us, being on site with us at places, supported us morally, thank you. And for those of y'all that didn't, you know what you can do. Justice for Cello.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jennifer Kennedy, and I'm a city of Erie resident. I'm here tonight because the community is still waiting, waiting for accountability, waiting for leadership, and waiting for a clear and public commitment from this body regarding the tragic death of Marcello Woodard. It has been four months since Marcello lost his life under circumstances that never should have happened. His family, friends, and this community have been left with unanswered questions, inconsistent explanations, and a deep sense of injustice. And despite this, we still do not have a formal resolution from this council calling for transparency, for accountability, or for the protections that should prevent a tragedy like this from ever happening again. County Council passed a formal resolution. I want to be clear, I know a resolution won't bring Marcello back, but it will show this council recognizes the gravity of what has happened to him, and that you are willing to use your authority to demand better from the systems and individuals involved. Right now, your silence is loud. And to the public, that silence reads as avoidance. It reads as indifference. It reads as a willingness to allow a tragedy to fade quietly into the background instead of confronting the failures that led to it. Marcello was a human being, a son, a loved one, a respected member of this community, and a man who deserved due process, safety, and dignity. His death was not just an isolated incident. It was a systemic failure with a chain of preventable decisions behind it, and those responsible must answer for it. I'm asking this council tonight to step into the leadership role this moment demands, because you have the power to pass a resolution calling for transparency from the district attorney's office and the Penn- Pennsylvania Board of Probation and Parole. I'm drafting that resolution. Ask that the district attorney's office and the PA Board of Probation and Parole come appear at a city council meeting to address questions related to transparency, communication, and investigative process. Affirm publicly that the actions taken against Marcello were unacceptable and must be investigated thoroughly and independently. You have the power to call for clear standards and oversight to ensure authority is not abused, and that no family in Erie ever has to go through this again. Our community wants to see action, not just sympathy, not just statements. We need action. We need to know that when a life is lost unjustly, especially at the hands of those supposedly tasked with supervision and public safety, that our local government will stand with the people, not hide behind process. So tonight, I am asking each of you, will you accept the resolution that I submit? I will be reaching out to have it sponsored by someone. Will you commit to bringing it to vote? And will you commit to showing the public that this council refuses to look the other way? Marcello deserved better. His family deserves better, and Erie deserves leaders who do not remain silent in the face of injustice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can we, can we, um, can we make sure we get her information so she could read the resolutions that have already been, uh, submitted? I think we covered almost every base she mentioned.
No, that was a letter or a resolution.
Is your number on the sign-in sheet?
No, go ahead.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Mimi O'Connor. I live in the city of Erie. I'm here for Justice for Cello. Last week, Ms. Shatiria Franklin was on the panel of the No Hate in Our State Town Hall held at the Erie Art Museum. She talked about the need for all of those in authority in the city to be in that room. She's a community leader, a business owner. She had just received Erie Public Schools Bravo Award for creating a new data integration tool for the district. She's also the mother of Cello's eight-year-old son, Major. She spoke so clearly, so personally, and really so generously, not just for herself, but for every person in this city, for the need for transparency, for accountability, and for justice. Through most of her presentation, she had tears running down her face. At one point, she apologized to the audience for her tears. Can you imagine? She and her family have not been contacted for 140 days. Here's my plea, or you could call it a prayer. May we not take our eyes off of her tears. May we hear in her words a call to come into the room together. May we see Cello and his family. May we hear them. May we respond to them with transparency and truth. May we name the racism of denial, delay, and disregard, and of not mattering. May we acknowledge the deeply embedded and recurrent trauma of all of this. Listen, I've been in healthcare for decades. If a person, right now, had a heart attack right here and right now, and fell down right in front of us, we would rush to revive them immediately. The murder of Marcello Woodard in cold blood, right in front of his community, is an emergency, in spite of the 140 days of delay, disregard, disrespect. His murder is an emergency of justice. This city has blood on its hands, and its conscience is on the ground. We have to move toward resuscitation of the truth and for a compassionate process in order to do that. We cannot bring Cello back, as was just said, but we can move in his honor. I'm grateful for Cello. And this Thanksgiving, I will give thanks for him. Honoring the spirit and the memory of a good man is a gift to all of us. He's actually cleared our vision of what justice is and what justice is not. He has called every one of us to what his cousin Craig Woodard Senior would say. He says, keep the main thing the main thing. Because justice for Cello is justice for every single one of us. God bless Cello and his grieving family. Please join me in saying his name out loud three times in order to consecrate our efforts going forward. Cello.
Cello.
Cello. Cello. Thank you for your time.
Is the stenographer here?
Good evening, Council. My name is Constantine Hyotes. Uh, I want to go ahead and congratulate to those that are re-elected. I hope that we can start with a clean slate type of attitude. Um, I'm here also for Justice for Cello. I never met the man personally, but I can attest and testify that out of all the people I've met that have known him, whether it was family, friends, loved ones, if it's any indication of how he was based on how I feel about those people, then he must have been a good man. Because you're not going to have that many people's support. Because you're not going to have that many people's support fight for over 140 days for you if you were a bad person at heart. Now, we all have faults. I mean, you could ask my wife, I'm no choir boy. But my thing is, we got to learn from our mistakes and move on. So why is it that the situation has gone for 100 and over 40 days and the family hasn't gotten any answers? If they can't get answers, they can't get closure. If they can't get closure, they can't go on with their lives. It's like you're not holding just the word of what the end result is, you're holding these people's lives hostage by not saying what should be said. Now, the other thing I want to mention is that I personally don't care if you have an R next to your name or a D. That doesn't mean shit to me. What I care about, what I care about is people need to start respecting people for their character, not for the color of their skin, and not for their political affiliation. That's what me and my wife here in Erie on the east side have learned, that these are people, they deserve respect, they deserve the breaks that you give to other people that might be a little more fortunate because they had better breaks. Like, for example, let me give you a perfect example. You guys want to build two hotels down by the Bayfront. How about this for an idea? How about building a veterans' village and maybe contact a company like Tunnel for Towers and get them to come down here and take one of those buildings and take those veterans that are out in the street every day and take those people that are out in the street every day, out in the ice cold, out here in Erie? Because I lived in Florida, it didn't matter if you were homeless in Florida, you could survive. In the cold weather, you cannot survive. So why can't you make a building or bring in Tunnel for Towers? Do something. Show the people and the veterans that fought for this country that you got their backs. Because that's what it means to care about the community. It's not just about ribbon cutting, it's not just about ceremonies, it's not just about going in front of the camera and smiling. We want action. The people here are fed up and they're starting to network, and we're starting to get together, and we're having town halls, and people are speaking, and for those of you who showed up, thank you. Because that's the kind of support we're going to need to move forward. If we're going to be serious about doing something in Erie, we got to stop jerking around, we got to stop playing games, and we got to step up to the plate and do whatever is necessary. And that means taking care of the elderly, that means when it's winter time, make sure the sidewalks are plowed, you know, the streets are plowed correctly and the sidewalks are clear. Because you're forcing people in wheelchairs to go on the streets on icy roads, and you're going to have fatalities. Let's stop caring about some stupid roundabout down by the Bayfront which is going to cause nothing but accidents, because I've experienced it, believe me. Clearwater, Florida, had a roundabout right down in the hotels where Clearwater was. Every time I went down to go to the beach or go to a club or something, there was always an accident. So good luck with that. So why don't we start putting our money towards the people that help you get in those seats rather than putting the money towards people that just want to come here and just show off what they can build or what they can show? The people here deserve the respect, the people here deserve the answers. I want Justice Fracello, and I want you to think very long and hard that this is an opportunity for you to step up and be the leaders that you say you're going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, we have to stop for the public hearing right now, sorry. We will continue after the public hearing.
How long is that?
Is the stenographer?
He's on line.
Oh, cool. Before you start, or you start and then we have to ask them to give testimony, if they're going to give testimony, to be sworn in. Okay, we're having a public hearing. We have a request for waterfront conditional use submitted by McErie Partners for construction of multiple family dwellings consisting of two three-story buildings totaling 30 units located on nine consolidated vacant lots from Front Street to Short Street on Myrtle East on Short Street as 263 West Front Street located in the waterfront residential district.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Cooper Moore, I'm the Secretary of the Design Review Committee and the Planning Commission for the city of Erie, here to introduce this project, and then we have an architect here to do a short presentation on what's being proposed. Just to inform counsel that the Design Review Committee and Planning Commission have both reviewed this project and have recommended it for approval. This is the waterfront conditional use approval to allow this to proceed. The land development process will follow, so they will come back and present to the Planning Commission twice, once the conditional use has been approved. The zoning review was completed by the city of Erie and no issues were raised. The public notice was posted on site and mailed out to adjacent property owners. The Planning Commission and Design Review Committee made several comments throughout their reviews about street trees that were proposed to be taken out and their replacement, and the material of the foundation of the buildings, all of which were addressed, and their recommendations come without conditions. Also, just to be aware that our West Bayfront Organization has an adopted city plan, or adopted, a neighborhood plan that's been adopted by the city of Erie that is in effect for this area throughout the land development process, will be encouraged to work with that organization.
Anybody going to offer testimony on the public hearings? If you could stand, raise your right hand, the stenographer will swear you in. Anyone that's going to offer testimony, please stand to be sworn in.
This is if you're in favor or against, if you plan on speaking, please stand. For this specific use of the land. Okay, stand if you're going to speak in favor or against during the testimony. Our stenographer's going to swear everybody in.
So everybody could stand and raise the right hand.
Okay. Can you swear? Can you swear? Are you going to swear?
No, you just got to stand.
We're swearing everybody in who's going to be speaking on the conditional use for this land development, that's what's happening right now.
The stenographer, if you want to, can you hear us?
That's not the stenographer, that's our architect.
That's the architect.
If he's not the stenographer, then we might not have a stenographer.
Do we have this recorded? So we're good. So do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give in this public hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Let the record reflect that one, two, three, four, five witnesses have been sworn.
Okay, Dane, if you can hear us, good to go.
Can everyone hear me?
You had it turned off.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen here. Thank you, everybody, for having me. Again, my name is Dane Bomberra, I'm with Interface Studio Architects, who's designing the project for McErie Partners, and I'm presenting the project at 263 West Front Street. As was discussed, the project contains is two buildings with 30 units that are on the two intersections of Front, Myrtle, and Short Street. Most of these units are, all of these units are one-bed or two-bed apartments that have balconies or, you know, outdoor spaces that face the lake. It's on nine lots that have been consolidated over the last five years, and we're proposing a modern design concept that plays off of like the local vernacular of gabled roofs, shake siding, and some vertical siding. Here you can see the plan, the site plan, showing the location of the site, as I said, it's on Front, Myrtle, and Short Street. Here you can see the two buildings situated on the site, so if you're looking at this plan, to the left is the lake. So the smaller of the two buildings that is parallel to Myrtle, on the corner of Front and Myrtle, is the 11-unit building. Parking lot between, and the back building that is on the corner of Myrtle and Short is a 19-unit building. As Cooper mentioned, we have coordinated with the zoning officials and have met all of the requirements of various setbacks, coverage, height, parking requirements. So as I said, it's two buildings, 30 units, so there are 30 surface parking spaces in between. And you can see that the access to the parking is off of Myrtle Street, turning into the parking with also an access off of Short Street. Here is our civil site plan, you know, showing similar information. As part of this review, it was discussed, you know, to look at the lighting levels of the various lighting elements that we're adding to the parking lot, so we've done a lighting study showing the lights that we're proposing for the parking lot, and that it is not, we're adding glare shields so that way the light is not polluting into other folks' yards of the nearby neighbors. This is our original submitted landscaping plan, after some comments about adding some more landscaping. As you can see here, we have, you know, various street trees along Myrtle and Short, and some landscaping around the two buildings. As you'll see later, it was discussed to add a little bit, some more landscaping around the building that is, the smaller building that is along Front and Myrtle, the 11-unit building, to, as it has, the topography kind of dips down towards Front Street, so the building, the foundation was sticking, coming out of the ground, so we've added some more landscaping to help cover that area where the landscape, where the foundation is sticking above. All of these plants are proposed to be indigenous plants to the area. This is just a general section of both buildings, as you can see, they're all flat, you know, flat unit apartments with either balconies or inset balconies that all face the lake. We're meeting the zoning requirements, the building height requirement is 50 feet, you can see that we are 37 and 35 feet plus or minus to the mean height of the roof on both buildings. Here is the plan as we are currently showing it, so the top one is Building One, that's the larger building, the 19-unit building that is along Myrtle and Short. So in that, in this plan, the lake is up on the page, you know, north on the page. So all of the units have, on the first floor, have a small outdoor space, garden space that they have access to, the sense, you know, the building is accessed through the center lobby with mail and mechanical room and bike storage, with two stairs that go up to the upper levels. The upper-level units on levels two and three all have attached balconies that face the lake. We did our best to prioritize all the units that have views towards the lake. Building Two, which is the smaller of the two buildings, is the 11-unit, that's the bottom of the page here. So in this, in this plan, the lake is to the left, as you can see on the first floor, which is on the left side, we're accessing the building off of the parking lot, there is a small fitness room, mechanical room, mailroom, with three units on that first floor, with two balconies facing the lake on the Front Street side, and on the Myrtle unit, there is an inset balcony. The center stair to show up to the levels two and three. Again, units on Front Street have attached balconies that face the lake, and the back two units have inset balconies that also have some views to the lake. This was our original submission of the design concept and materials. In discussion with the various plan review committees, we added some, a little bit more information as to the exact materials that we were proposing, so this is the revised, it's the same design concept but with actual specified materials. The design concept is to basically have an A and B type, so a lighter finish, which is on the building, on the 11-unit building, and a darker finish, which is on the rear 19-unit building, using a hardy cement, a fiber cement shingle siding material that kind of matches the shingles of the roof and wraps down the building. You can think of this as a coarse, medium, fine material palette, so the outer shell is this coarse material of the fiber cement shake siding. Then the next layer in, that you'll see on this facade primarily, is the standing seam metal siding, it's a vertical siding. And then an inner, then the last piece of that puzzle is the fine material, which is a corrugated metal siding. You can see that, you know, we're going for a beige, bronze material color palette here with these materials. So the darker, the darker palette is on the left and the lighter palette's the right, both of them have this fine material here. And we're also just proposing a metal mesh fencing around the units, the outdoor spaces for the units on the first floor of the back building, the larger building. You can see here, here's the Short Street elevation, so this is the Myrtle Street elevation, you can see both buildings with the parking lot in the middle, Short Street elevation is just the larger building, and see how those materials start to pan out. And then the Front Street elevation showing the 11-unit building in the front here, so the lake's behind us in this image, and the larger building in the rear of the site. There's also, you know, there are buildings in between, there's a neighboring building here that we're not showing at this moment in this image. And here's the larger views and perspectives, this is as if you were standing on the corner of Short and Myrtle, looking at, the right hand is the larger 19-unit building and the left is the 11-unit building in the parking lot in the center, so you can see how those materials start to play out with each other. The difference between these two images, this is the original image we showed, and we are adding some more landscaping along the 11-unit building, as you'll see in this image, because of the way the grading works, this building kind of starts to stick out of the ground a little bit as the foundation, as the topography dips. So we are proposing more landscaping along that facade. And actually, as we have developed this, the plan a little bit more, we've adjusted this first floor height to be a little bit lower, to actually lower the, lower this, you know, kind of water table of the foundation even a little bit more. So again, this is the, as if the lake is behind us, we're standing on Front Street, the 11-unit building on the right, the 19-unit building in the rear, all of them having the attached balconies that face the lake. We've added those, more landscaping along this facade. And then this is our final image, which is the image of the larger building, is on Short Street, showing the kind of main entrance of this building, and the, and the play of materials of the fiber cement and the metal panel that we're proposing. This is our final image, I appreciate everyone's time and consideration of this project, and please let me know if you have any questions.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I wanted to know, I noticed that you mentioned many times that every new apartment's going to have access to the view of the water. You guys stated that you sent out a letter to the neighboring properties, how long before the letter was sent out did you guys determine that neighbors were in favor or not in favor, before we decided to like make plans to, you know, build? Do we have a timeline?
That's actually a zoning procedure that we do, and we do it as soon as...
I personally am not aware of the exact timeline, so I would have to defer to Cooper on that.
And I just swear myself in, so if you need to justify it, yeah.
We do.
Okay.
All testimony. All right, yeah, we'll go ahead and do that. So if you would raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you please state your name and then go ahead and answer the question?
Amy Francis, I live in Harbor Creek Township. I'm the city zoning officer as well. All of those letters are sent out as soon as the public ad is sent out, so it's about two weeks. Along with the neighborhood groups, they get an immediate email at this time. That's our new procedure that we've been able to establish in some of these.
And did we not get any?
I did not hear any feedback on my end.
With the distribution around from the neighborhood groups, do we have an estimation on, when that email went out, how many people received the email, who was notified, how they were notified?
All neighboring properties are connected, and that are connected to the property are the ones that get that immediate, I'm sorry, immediate letter. That's the mailing that I talked about. Again, with the post office, it does get a little delayed sometimes. If there was a better way to do that, I would absolutely do this, but we have to go with one that was announced publicly. At this time, at that time of that mailing, the email went directly to our West Bayfront as well.
I guess my concern is just with how delayed our mail service is, only giving a two-week
I guess my concern is just with how delayed our mail service is, only giving a two-week window might not be enough time. By the time the owners get the letter, it might be a little late for them to reach out. I just know that after the fact, we get, I know I receive emails from people who live in those neighborhoods and on those streets who are concerned with this new building blocking their view of the water. And I like how they continuously stated each new apartment is going to have a view of the water, but the residents around them. You see where my concern is?
I do, and I told you earlier, I was ready for your height question. Everything has been reviewed, everything is in accordance to the zoning ordinance at this time.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
We found out the stenographer had car trouble. Kelsey got an email.
We're good, we're able to record it, so we're good. Do we have any other testimony that anyone wishes to offer regarding this proposal?
Hello, I'm Dan Dollkemper, I'm a landscape architect. I'm on the design review-
Hold on one moment, we had to swear you in, the formality of it. Right hand, if you would swear, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, sir.
Dan Dollkemper, 108 Myrtle Street, and I'm on the design review committee, so I've seen this project before, and I had made some comments, because street trees, I think, are required to be replanted. They have them designated for Short Street and Myrtle Street, but not Front Street. Well, you want to have the views, that was the answer, but it didn't really complete that. And I don't recall the concrete going on the backside of the building that runs north and south, that seems to be a new thing. At the same time that we reviewed this project, there was another project being reviewed, and they allowed for 1.6 parking spots per unit, because some of these units are one-bedroom, some are two-bedroom. They met the requirements by providing for one parking spot per unit. Now, the other project over closer to Plum Street is a little different. In this neighborhood, there's a lot of people from Hammont, Gannon, and even the courthouse that park in this neighborhood. So most people have more than one car, so they've met the requirements, but it doesn't allow for extra room. And if you go back to the site plan, the parking lot is in the back there, there's a dumpster location right at the end of the driveway, which is great, so that the refuse people can come in and get that. But I've lived here a long time, and having a landscape, and I've also plowed snow, there is no place in this parking lot to stack snow. And for instance, like, we had a pretty big snow event last Thanksgiving, just normal snow. So you can see on the site plan, directly off of Short Street, there's a dumpster location, and there's enough parking spaces, and then they have landscaping hedged along Myrtle Street to screen the parking, which is noble, but there's no place to put snow. And you're going to have cars parked in those areas, there's no garages, there's only surface parking, and of course, there's street parking, which is great. At most times in Erie, we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem. But this, this neighborhood also has a lot of, like I said, parking from some of the places, people that live downtown. So we're glad to see development going on in the neighborhood. We live just on the opposite corner over there, we provide plenty of parking for ourselves and for our tenants, but we're concerned about that in this area, as some of the other people might be. They've met the spirit of the requirements, as noted by the zoning officer, but we're concerned for what happens in a snow event and, you know, other things. So I just wanted to bring that up, some of the landscaping, which is my gig, you know, is important also, that it, that it looks nice. And they did add some shrubbery. You can't always trust that to engineers, because they line them right up, you know, as they would. So that's, those are some of the comments, I think, are some of the concerns of the neighbors. And in design review committee, and I don't know how that overlaps, there was no indication of any sort of signage, lighting, and those types of things that are part of the requirements. Design review, I don't know if they presented that to the planning commission, what the planning commission's recommendations were. So that's from a neighborhood, neighbor point of view, thank you.
Sir, are you, are you against or for? You brought a lot of points, but overall, the project?
And I think there's a few changes that should be made to improve it for the sake of the neighborhood. You know, they're saying that there's going to be a view from every unit. If you look on the Short Street building, Justin Ricardo lived there, there's a couple other houses, those units will have no views, but that's just a marketing thing, you know, so that's up to them. I'm in favor of the development, we're disappointed, I don't know if you recall, there was another element, another proposal for condos here. In our West Bay Front, there's only 22% homeowner-occupied units there, only 22%. Most of the units in our West Bay Front are rented, and that's a problem with the neighborhood, because the landlords don't tend to maintain the units the same way that a homeowner would have in those areas. So it's disappointing that they went with rental units. Hey, it's their development, they bought the land, it's up to them to do, but they've changed the concept from condos to rental units now. And so, and, you know, the developers are good people, we hope that they do a good job, they want to get approval so they can move ahead and make sure that things are good. So I think they should review a couple of the items on there for approval. But I, I'm in favor, generally, okay?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Hi, my name is Chanel Caljean. This is my first time hearing about the project. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I noticed, similar to the person that spoke before me. There's 30 parking spots, but there are two bedrooms. I know I've lived in a one-bedroom with my husband, we have two vehicles. I also am a resident in the Lower East Side, but I spend quite a lot of time over near Gannon, and that area is always busy, especially given all of the sporting events and different activities that the, our West Bay Front hosts, or what Gannon hosts. So I think particularly, the parking is definitely a concern. Clearly, there is no use of underground parking, no overhang, somebody spoke about snow removal. I really think that's something that should be thought about, whether you guys consider, or the developer considers, overhang or something. Snow is an issue here in Erie. And yeah, don't want to be caught off guard with that. Another issue is Erie is a very community-centric space, and there's no community or communal space that I saw on the drawing. I think that's something that maybe the developer is lacking, or could potentially include, whether that's like a barbecue space or somewhere. We are a very communal, community-oriented city, and I would hate for big development to kind of forget about that. A park bench goes quite a long way. And then lastly, the thing I wanted to mention is, in the very beginning, the archaeal, or the architect, mentioned that materials will blend in, but I actually think the design looks very modern, and unlike any of the homes in that area. I'm not sure if they are the same developer that built the house, 946 West Second Street, it's a multifamily home on the west side as well. Looks very similar to one of the buildings, and they also have balconies and looks beautiful, they also have parking in that area. But as a resident of Los Angeles originally, I know what modern design looks like, and this building does not really blend in with a lot of the homes that we have in that area, which I think is a little bit of, unfortunately, or it's, yeah, something to be considered. I love the character in the old homes, and I think that's something to consider. So, that's all.
Thank you.
I am here to dissent for the sake of dissenting. This is also my first time seeing this project, and where we talked a lot about infrastructure and aesthetics, I want to focus more on the economic and cultural impact of this kind of project and future projects.
Are you able to identify your name for the record?
Yes, sir, I apologize. I'm Martha Wachuku, City of Erie resident. Like I said, I want to focus more so on economic impact and cultural impact. A few months ago, I took a walk with upcoming county, or city councilperson Andre Horton, and he walked me through the neighborhood, and walked me through the history of what this neighborhood used to be, which is New Jerusalem, a historically black neighborhood where a lot of escaped slaves and free people made a home here in Erie. And what has happened, and what is continuing to happen, is that due to the, you know, the closing of these major businesses in the 60s and 70s, and the, the leaving of so many African-Americans from the city, and then the aging of people who own homes, we're seeing a lot less homeownership among African-Americans in this neighborhood. And for the sake of the record, I want to make sure that someone is speaking to the cultural impact of how these kind of developments often contribute to the continual displacement of African-Americans from their historical neighborhoods. Very soon here, I'll be 10 years living in Erie, but I grew up in Pittsburgh and continue to go home to Pittsburgh, and I see how new developments of apartment buildings and condos pop up everywhere, and tend, not tend to, often lead to an increase of rental unit prices in the surrounding areas, as well as long-term, the impact of taxes for homeowners and the increased cost of living for the entire neighborhood. So what I didn't hear spoken to, and I think it's just a matter of, you know, how these presentations are usually done, I didn't hear the cost of what these apartments would be when they first started, I didn't hear anything about the target income from these neighborhoods, or for this project. And I know it's not something that is typically important for the developer, which is just, there's a profit motive for them, but as a resident, who, when I first moved here, I lived on West Ave Street in Myrtle, that was my stomping grounds, I want to make sure that not only does this area remain affordable for young adults, young families, families in general, but that it maintains some sort of cultural representation of the people that used to live there. Thank you. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Gretchen Kerr, I'm the executive director of our West Bay Front, I've served in this position a little bit over a year. And I'm here to speak, obviously, on the development today, and I appreciate the comments that I've heard this evening. Our West Bay Front is aware of the proposed project currently under consideration, and while we have not received detailed information or outreach from the McEary development team, at least in my, in my current position now, we have not had any outreach by them, and therefore have heard only limited input from directly impacted residents, we remain committed to staying informed and asked to be included as plans progress. Our West Bay Front welcomes the opportunity to collaborate with the McEary team as they move through the City of Erie's land development process, which is the next level that they need to go through. Participation in this review is essential. As Jackie Spry mentioned, or as Cooper mentioned, I'm sorry, the city has adopted the our West Bay Front Community Plan, which should help guide, should help guide, and inform potential development within our footprint. We stand ready to convene neighbors and stakeholders to support an inclusive and transparent process. We will continue to monitor the project and remain committed to a community-centered approach that ensures all stakeholders in the West Bay Front are included. And finally, as development interest in the West Bay Front grows, our West Bay Front is requesting closer collaboration with the city's planning commission at the early, not late stages of future projects. Early coordination helps ensure that neighborhood priorities, community perspectives, and long-term planning goals are reflected from the outset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony? Yeah, you'd be there, but you need to be sworn.
Yeah.
If you'd raise your, stand and raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make just a few, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Jackie Spry, I'm the director of Planning and Neighborhood Resources at the City of Erie. I'd just like to make a few comments, really around process and understanding of why there's a public hearing today. First and foremost, I'd also like to comment, and I appreciate Mr. Dollkemper coming as a citizen to speak on behalf of this development, but I do want to note that the design review committee, which is the committee that the waterfront, waterfront overlay district reviews, they review these developments, they, they did vote in favor of this project. And then, from there, it went to Planning Commission, which again, voted to recommend that it come in front of city council. So we are talking about waterfront conditional use here, we are not talking about necessarily land development. What you see here is a site plan in front of you, these are not engineered drawings, and these are not construction documents at all. That is the next part of this. So once, if this is approved and goes forward, then we would move into the land development phase of this, as Gretchen mentioned. As you know, and you voted on the amendments to the subdivision and land development ordinance, that now has changed drastically, and that whole process, while both transparent and also lengthy for a reason, it will be our second one that's going to be coming through if, if the time allows. The first stage of that development process is what we call a sketch plan. We convene the internal departments with the developer and with neighborhood groups that are directly involved, to have a meeting internally to discuss it at the very beginning of the, of the process. We encourage the developer to go in front of the planning commission to talk about the sketch plan. From there, a preliminary plan is submitted. That plan is submitted to Cooper, and again, a review process goes through internally, through zoning, through engineering. We're having discussions to align and make sure that the comprehensive plan is upheld, as well as any, any adopted plan that would be, that would be directly affected, that this development is directly affecting. So the preliminary plan then goes to the planning commission, and then a final plan, if it's a major land development, as we discussed in caucus tonight, and this would be a major land development, again, would go back in front of the planning commission for another public meeting. So there are multiple steps along the way where the public has the opportunity, and there's review by multiple departments. This is a bit of a new process for the city, and, and we are cognizant of inclusivity and making sure that we are aligning these developments with the adopted plans that we have in place. So I just want to make sure that that's a little clear, what, what exactly we're, we're looking at here today.
May I ask a question? Now, I know, I know as Mr. Dollkemper there is on the design committee, I mean, really, when he's given a presentation, and a lot of these different boards, they pretty much have a checklist where they have to say, okay, and if it checks the boxes, then they functionally have to approve it, is my understanding. Or is there an opportunity for them to say, I don't think the neighbors are going to like this, we need to reconsider?
They are not looking at anything other than design materials, and we're looking at the zoning overlay, which is governed by the zoning ordinance, it's not a checklist, it's governed by the ordinance, the zoning ordinance. That is their function, and they can put conditions upon that development at the time of the design review committee, which they did, in fact, they did. So it's not a series of checkboxes, it is a, it is a, you know, governed by the zoning ordinance of what they have to review.
Now, waterfront condition was like our most unique zoning situation, it goes through a couple of these extra steps, so that the constituents have a chance to speak out. Where are the, like, so at each of these spots that it will be going through in the future, those boards, how much of them, how much of those boards have the flexibility- Um, where are we at? So I understand the, the process that was just outlined. I am having a hard time of like, kind of settling, settling this with, with some of the comments that have come up, because it doesn't feel like the, the neighbors were included, and it does, and I know that there, we followed the procedural outlines of, of getting people involved, but just what we're hearing tonight, it, for, for whatever reason, the, it, it just, it, people didn't feel heard. So here we are. But where are we at in the process? Like, how many more steps do we get before this goes into, like, we're approved, we're building? Like, where are we at when you, when you look at the next steps of where we go from here?
So this is waterfront conditional use is its own process because it's an overlay district on our zoning map. It's really the only overlay district that we have. It's a very unique situation. So the code states that any development, any project that is within this district has to have, go through this process and has to go in front of the Design Review Committee first. And zoning, it has to comply with the district's zoning requirements. So that's the first part of where we're at, where we, they, they have not submitted any kind of final drawings, constructions, and Public Works has not looked at this whatsoever, engineering. This has only been submitted through our department and through zoning. That's the first, that's the first step.
So there is still opportunity then? I just wanted to, I guess, clarify for people to come in to object to, and then it will come back in front of us to vote?
Um, Council will see it, I believe, two more times. I think there's a first reading and a second reading before the vote?
No. Nope. Council has delegated the voting powers to the Planning Commission. So-
But not, I'm talking about the waterfront-
Oh, waterfront, for waterfront conditional use or for land development? Sorry.
For this, for waterfront.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so you'll see it two more times for waterfront conditional use. Once that's been approved and we start the land development phase, it'll be two times in front of the Planning Commission. And once the Planning Commission's approved it, that's it.
I guess, for me, it's also creating a little bit of transparency as I'm asking some of these questions, just so that people can see where we're at in the process, where they then can come back in for more feedback and, and participate and be included in the process, and to know that when we're talking tonight, there's still opportunity to come back before we vote on anything moving forward.
Yes.
Right. You're not, we're not asking you to take action tonight because it's a public hearing. So, right, as Cooper stated, you'll, it will be, it have, it will have to be read twice. So two, two additional meetings plus at least three meetings for land development in front of Planning Commission. So there's, but I, I mean, just for land development, not for waterfront conditional use. For waterfront conditional use, it will be in front of you two more times, but in general, for transparency, there's at least three public meetings still in the ske- in the, in the workflow.
Thank you again, and just so we can keep it as, as open and transparent.
It's, it's all new, and it's, it's very intricate, so I'm happy to go over it many times.
We had no offers for condominium building rather than apartment building? I keep thinking of a young lady that spoke up about the Lower West Side and the black community. Homeownership seems to be so much more important than renting. After ten years of LURDA, you're gonna have rental property that can probably be depreciated to zero as far as the insides and carpets and all that kind of stuff. If you have condos, you have people that are living right there and owning. That's the only reason I ask.
I have a few things to comment on. So the mayor started giving us calendars, and on the calendars are all of the meeting days. And the Planning Commission meets once a month at one o'clock on Tuesdays, and if you can't come to the meeting, which is public here in the chambers, it is on the City Government Facebook page. So if I can't come to a meeting, I just click on that City Government Facebook page, and I can watch the whole meeting. So those always have options. I have always loved the Our West Bay Front area. I am a middle-aged, retired, not-a-lot-of-money person. I have come to the understanding, after fifteen years or more of following housing in there, that I will not live in the Our West Bay Front. And I've come to that understanding. However, I enjoy the Our West Bay Front. I see Dan and Kathy planning and gardening with their tulips, and I see Jessie and Ricardo outside, and I park my car down at Dobbin's Landing, and I walk the bluffs in the Our West Bay Front neighborhood and attend to as many things as I can. I have heard over and over again, different people saying that they're losing their view. My husband and I take a vacation once a year somewhere along the Atlantic coast, and we do VRBO or B-whatever, and we rent places, and you can tell the people who've lost their views. I mean, it's a given fact. If you have money and you're developing, those people along the Atlantic coast, there's these little houses that used to be able to see the ocean, cannot. So, you know, I'm just saying, it's reality, sort of. Thank you.
I, I have a question. When it comes to the, um, public engagement, let's say, for example, the public engagement was really good, and the neighborhood said they don't want the development. Does that stop the developer, or they, they just do that as a courtesy, just to, can, can that stop the, if I, if I'm buying, I'm gonna develop, and I poll the people around the development, and they say, well, we don't want it. Can I still build even though they gave me a poll that says they don't want it? What is, what's the, I guess that's-
The, the, the recommending powers are delegated to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So the Planning Commission is what, what would either vote to approve the project or not. So exactly why a transparent process is so important, because there's opportunity for the public to come and voice, voice, voice their opinion and be heard at those public meetings. So if you're asking if the city makes that decision, no, that, that's why the process is there. We're there as a recommending and reviewing body, making sure that they're in compliance with stormwater, making sure they're in compliance with whatever regulations we have in place and ordinances we have in place, but it is the, it is the body, the Planning Commission body that is the deciding factor.
Oh, like, if they meet all the requirements, and, and they just, people around them saying, well, I don't want, I don't, I'd rather not have this, but they meet all the requirements, they, they can probably still build it anyways, right? Even if the people around it, if they engage the people fully, have rounds and rounds of asking people, talking to people, and they have the money and they have all the requirements, I mean, I just-
If, if there's opposition and there, and it's heard, and again, that, that's why there's the, that due pro- that, that process, because it, it's delegated to the Planning Commission. But we would hope that it would be tabled, or there would be consideration or conditions put on the property. Also, we are under a time limit per the state regulations. It has to go, a development, when it comes to land development, it has to be, it has to go in front of the Planning Commission within ninety days. So we are under some time constraints, time constraints as well. It's all governed, what we're doing with our subdivision and land development is governed by state regulations. So I hope I answered your question.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just didn't know if that was, uh, has happened in the past where like, maybe the surrounding people were like, hey, we don't want this, but then the developer just said, hey, you know, I don't, I asked you, I heard you, but I'm still gonna build it anyways.
And I'm so happy you mentioned that, because land development was not going in front of the Planning Commission for the last twenty years. So this, this opportunity for the public to voice how they feel about a, or what's, if there's obstruction or encroachment or whatever it may be, this is not, these are opportunities that the public will now have, that the neighborhood organizations will have, and precisely why they have different touch points along the way. So thank you for bringing that up.
One concern I have is, you know, it's about thirty apartments in those two, and everybody that lives in those apartments is gonna be parking in that parking lot in between. If they get any kind of snow, like we did last winter, which started right, you know, right out, it was the night after Thanksgiving, and I know, I, I did a lot of shoveling at my house, and I didn't have a lot around, but I was running out of places to throw the snow, you know, because there was no place. So I'm just worried about how these people are gonna deal with that. I think, I, I'd encourage the people to take some action. I don't know if you could make that covered, that whole parking area, but, and it's not gonna be a problem a lot of days, but there, there will be some days in the winter I think it's gonna be a big problem.
Yes, and snow is a very valid concern in Erie, as we know, I mean, after last winter. And, and that's all the sort of thing that will be worked out in the land development process. This, this conditional use process is just to allow this multifamily dwelling to be in the waterfront zone, and the things like snow removal, garbage, the floor plates, all of that will be worked out in the land development process, but it's, it's a very valid concern.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Does anyone else wish to offer testimony?
If you would like to speak, yeah.
If you'd come up, I, and I, although this is a very informal gathering, this is still actually a legal proceeding, so bear with me. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony? All right. Anyone else? Because you're all driving me crazy collectively by only going one at a time, so we'll get everybody sworn in. If you wish to offer, if you would stand, please raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, we have four additional witnesses sworn. There's no one else? All right, we'll proceed. Sir?
We're Jessie Ricardo, we live one block from, we testify. Oh, yes.
If you would state your name, and then you can, you can offer your testimony.
We are Jessie Ricardo.
And we don't want our view obstructed.
Yeah, we live two five five, we live directly next door to the project. I mean, we've seen the project deteriorate from private-owned houses to condominiums, condominiums.
Oh, we've seen the project deteriorate from private-owned houses to condominiums and now apartment buildings. And, uh, well, really, it's not that I don't like it, I'm all for new construction, I hope, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it, but we don't want our view-
Of exquisite design.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And I think Dan Dahlkemper spoke to that, and that's why we didn't get up initially, because he volunteered our feelings. And of course, we want, we'd ideally want a couple of new neighbors like Dylan and Jamie and Kathy and Dan. I don't know about thirty.
Yeah, and are they gonna be affordable? Are they gonna be ADA compliant? I mean, what is he really going to build there? I mean, can he change this design once, once he gets these project plans approved? Can you change the design, or is it set in stone?
Really, we want the McBriers to move next door. They all can build a house.
Well, that's all we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And please state your name and then offer your testimony.
Hello, my name is Savannah Wilson. I'm a resident in the City of Erie. So I guess my concerns are, I just want to know how the process works for the Planning Committee. Who do you, how do you know who to choose for the Planning Committee? And if it's during the afternoon, like 1:00 PM, how can we get active community members involved if it's during that time? Also, I'm conducting research on the population decline throughout the county, and housing is a huge reason why we're not attracting or retaining our residents here. So I guess I would love for all of you, part of that, to send your cards my way, so thank you for that. I would love to just be a part of this. I want to be a part of it, I want to understand more, so excuse my ignorance of not understanding, like, it, what exactly the zoning is and everything, but I feel like this is very important, especially for young people. When we talk about having multifamily homes, we're realizing that in the state of Pennsylvania, there's not a lot of people having any children. So when this comes to families here in Erie, we know that a lot of families are living in poverty, so will Section Eight be included? And again, to the point of how much per unit will this be? So yeah, I just, I really want to know more, I want to know more, I want to understand what the vision is, like, what is the core value of these, of this building? Like, what do you want to see out of this? If you don't want negative comments, because we know how Erie is, they like to say things on Facebook when they don't like things, but I want to try to open that dialogue more, maybe invite in the community to have more public discussion about what the vision is, and even for future projects as well, because I don't even know who's on the Planning Committee. I've never met you beautiful, lovely people before. So this is like, very important for our city moving forward, especially if we want to attract and retain residents, because this is something that is very awesome. But when it comes to understanding what we need for our community, I, I just don't think this is it, especially in the neighborhood that it's in. If we know that down in that region, in that zip code, is one of the struggling zip codes here in the city, we have to make sure that it's inclusive to everybody, and that word keeps getting brought up, and transparency also keeps being brought up, but today is the first day I've heard anything about this, and I know Kathy's mentioned that it's on the calendars. I'm gonna be real, a lot of people do not see those calendars, they don't look at those calendars, and I know that it might be on Facebook, but there has to be another way to get this information out to people, so I would love to help with that. So I'll be collecting all your cards, and that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Council, again, I'm just gonna read directly from the waterfront conditional application that directs where the authority comes from. City of Erie Zoning Ordinance, Section 306, Conditional Uses, is the section that we're referring to. So ultimately today, a building permit or a zoning certificate for a use in the waterfront district will be issued only after receiving recommendations from Design Review Committee, Planning Commission, and City Council approval. So all we're really doing today is issuing a zoning certificate for permission to go on to the next steps to planning for land development. So that comes right out of my zoning ordinance at this time. This application and all of this information is directly on the zoning website, if you need to have referred to it. Okay? this is it, especially in the neighborhood that it's in. If we know that down in that region, in that zip code is one of the struggling zip codes here in the city, we have to make sure that it's inclusive to everybody and that word keeps getting brought up and transparency also keeps being brought up. But today is the first day I've heard anything about this, and I know Kathy's mentioned that it's on the calendars. I'm gonna be real, a lot of people do not see those calendars, they don't look at those calendars. And I know that it might be on Facebook, but there has to be another way to get this information out to people. So I would love to help with that. So I'll be collecting all your cards and that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Counsel, again, I'm just gonna read directly from the waterfront conditional application that directs where the authority comes from. City of Erie zoning ordinance, Section 306, conditional uses, is the section that we're referring to. So ultimately today, a building permit or a zoning certificate for a use in the waterfront district will be issued only after receiving recommendations from Design Review Committee, Planning Commission, and City Council approval. So all we're really doing today is issuing a zoning certificate for permission to go on to the next steps to planning for land development. So that comes right out of my zoning ordinance at this time. This application and all of this information is directly on the zoning website if you need to have referred to it.
There's other people that need to speak. This is Tina Hyotes from the east side of Erie, but I just wanted to touch on what Ms. Savannah just said. There is a lack of transparency when it comes to these kind of things going on in the city, because this is the first I had ever heard of it either. And if you're wanting people in the community to have their input and their say, even though it's on like the websites or the Facebook page, there are a lot of people who don't access that and don't know that. A lot of this stuff needs to be actually put out in the community and be talked about more with the people who live in there, so you can get an informed decision. So when these kind of things do come, a lot of those things could already be nailed out and a lot of the things that these developers were going to be coming up against, or maybe coming up against tonight, could have already been preaddressed by having a more active role with the people in the community, and I just don't think it got out there very well.
Last, last note, I hate to hold up public comments for more, but to Kathy and Mo Troop asked some very good questions around if the public were to say no, could this be canceled? And you very loosely said that, you know, ultimately it comes down to the zoning authority saying yes or no. So as a public person, or a person sitting in a public, listening to that, that actually sounds like the public doesn't actually have any power and this feels like a show and dance. So I think we need to come together long-term and have better discussions about this, because beyond this apartment building here, there's a lot of talk about data centers and other economic engines. We need to be able to get into those conversations early and have real impact. And so to the point about these meetings being at 3:00 PM and on the calendar, we just came out of an election cycle where it takes three to seven conversations to make sure anyone goes out to the poll and votes. So if we want people to participate in these conversations, it's gonna take a lot more than putting on the calendar and Facebook to expect them to contribute. And also, it also takes, we've been doing, there's been a lot of town halls happening in town, I think these kind of conversations need to exist in a town hall so that it can be in an actual communal conversation. And then lastly, who's on the zoning authority and redevelopment authority and all these other authorities? How diverse are they not only in race, but class and educational background? I think a lot of times, you know, the people making these decisions don't have the life experience or communal experience to make and think about the questions that everyone else is thinking about. And it impacts us all long-term. Yeah, I think that was everything, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to offer testimony? Seeing none, that will close the public hearing. Mr. Withers, oh, that'll close that hearing, but now we have a second one.
Cooper, do you want me to read it? Okay, the second public hearing is a request to rezone parcel tax ID number 185302303 from R1 to C2 located adjacent to 4125 Peach Street, C2, to consolidate the two lots to form a single commercial parcel zoned C2. R1 is residential, C2 is commercial.
Anyone wishing to offer testimony in this hearing? If you would, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll give in this proceeding today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And when you speak, please say your name, because this could be a separate record that would need to be created.
Sure. Good evening, Cooper Moore, I'm the Secretary of the City Planning Commission. Just here to inform, excuse me, just here to inform counsel that the Planning Commission has also recommended the approval of this rezoning. And just to reiterate, this is a parcel adjacent to 4125 Peach Street, currently zoned R1, and proposed rezoning to C2 and combining with the adjacent lot, which would also constitute change in use, recommended by the City Planning Commission, and they did note that it aligns with our city's comprehensive plan, Erie Refocused, which does designate the area as commercial. And then I think we have a short presentation as well.
Good evening, everybody. Drew Baldwin, Mill Creek Township. I represent the petitioner for the rezoning of this property. This property is the former JD Byrider on Peach Street. As you can see, the area highlighted in red is currently zoned R1. We would like to incorporate that property into the JD Byrider property for flexibility for redevelopment. Now currently, the R1 property is, is kind of like a spot zoned, so this does comply with the Erie, the new Erie map.
What are the plans for JD Byrider? What do they plan to do with that parcel of land?
It's currently vacant.
Okay.
So there are no plans.
So they don't wanna do anything with it, they just wanna acquire it?
No, no, no. So the property was purchased by the owner, both properties were purchased by the same owner. Essentially, they're trying to redevelop the site. So they're targeting right now permitted uses in the C2 zoning district. So that could be anything from what you see all along the Peach Street corridor there.
So the reason for that is to be more attractive to certain development?
Yeah, so essentially when you, so right now, that property in red is, has a variance for commercial use. That's specific to the JD Byrider parcel.
Okay.
Okay, so what that does is if you can combine it all, then you have control for accessibility, you can improve things like that, you don't need additional curb cuts, so it's a safety issue too. And then after, you know, once that's done, if and when they get a tenant, it'll go through the land development process, in which, in that time, that's when all the items will be addressed.
May you say the address again of that place?
It's 4125 Peach. That's JD Byrider. The other parcel does not have an address.
It's next to the RVs.
Between RVs and-
That's correct.
Food.
Yep.
Is there anyone else wish to offer testimony? Seeing none, with that, we will close the public hearing.
We will return to citizens to be heard.
My name is Terry Roberts. I've lived in the city of Erie all my life. I wasn't gonna say nothing tonight, I had signed up to talk, but I wasn't gonna say anything, but it bothered me that we can have a public hearing on property, talking about water and views and, I don't want my house visual blocked and this and that. Can we get a public hearing to talk about the situation with Marcello, on the city handling that situation? And then can we get these same people to maybe come up and dedicate some property in Marcello's name? Build some property up in the city? We keep talking about this outer parts. Let's talk about what's going on in the inner city, where Marcello was murdered. Can we get some built up there? These same people that was just up here, can they come to a public hearing? Can we have a public hearing on Marcello's situation and talk about the same thing? We just spent a whole hour sitting here talking about water, property. But when they was talking, we got, we got feedback from everybody, but when I bring this up, nobody has nothing to say. That's all I'm gonna say.
My name is Kimberly Gigness, I'm a homeowner on the Lower East Side. I own a property that is adjoining to the Greenway Project, the Greenway Trail, worked on by the Redevelopment Authority. The property has been my family since 1989, I have owned it since 2017, when I got pregnant with my first child, I have four. I had reached out in 2017, when I was in discussions about a possible grant with Redevelopment Authority to purchase this property, and I was told it wasn't gonna ever be for sale, would take too much to sell it. All of the adjacent neighbors, except for me, were obviously in communicate, so like the last property issue kind of tied into a lot of what, some of the concerns that were raised, because I, as a homeowner next to this land, was not contacted and all the other ones were. I mean, they had fences replaced with this big beautiful new fence. Now, I had reached out when construction started to both the contractors on the property being constructed on, as well as Redevelopment Authority, asking for access to the back of my garage that was about to be part, a wall to the park. And I was told by the Redevelopment Authority I would be able to access the back of my garage through that property to do repairs on it that had been blocked by a fence that was put in by Serviery when they adopted the lock. And they asked me, Serviery had asked me to put a mural, or they did the mural on the fence, but put a gutter on my garage. That gutter caused damage to my garage, it wasn't properly installed and I had repairs to do. And I was told this permanent fence was the last project the construction crew had and it was very quickly installed after I was told I would have access. And then I was told by the Redevelopment Authority that they would discuss it with them to take a panel down, and I didn't think it was possible based on the construction of the fence, so I could repair the back of my garage. And then he, he didn't feel well and he couldn't meet with me the day we planned, and we met, we were gonna meet the following week, and I took my children somewhere because I didn't know what time, we didn't plan a time, and he was already at the property when he called me. So he called me back and basically said, sorry, there's nothing I can do, you can climb over your neighbor's fence and shimmy into the about foot space and repair your wall from there. And I just, I'm just a busy person, I expressed to them I was gonna start the repairs myself in the most damaged part beneath where the gutter was installed, and I just don't know who to talk to, because I saw you guys were dealing with property easements and blighted property, and that's just it. They took out older fencing, replaced it with new fencing, and then they left trash that was accumulated when the city owned that property and it was in blight itself and overgrown. And I could only access it through the city-owned property again in blight and overgrown while either pregnant or with a newborn child to get back there, but then quickly it was adopted and built into another park, but my, my, the access to my wall was still blocked by a wooden fence. I didn't think anything until the fence came down and the trees came down and I saw the damage that had been done. And, but now, despite being told I could repair it, it's almost inaccessible and I was not considered as the other neighbors were. And the way they just went around it, I, several months ago, before this project ever started in construction, came down here to this building to speak to the Redevelopment Authority because the neighbor to my west had their property manager, it is an apartment building to the west, I own and live in the property I own, was told that they were, they had received two eminent domain letters. So I came down here with concern, wondering if that my property was also going to be in that same position. So when they quickly walled up my building and left it open for blight, not allowing me to damage it, that didn't really seem right, because it's in disrepair and I can't easily assess it. So, I mean, I don't know what else much to say, I don't wanna tie it up, there's other bigger issues here too, but for me, that's an issue, because I reached out before it happened and, and they quickly built a wall around me, so.
Where's your last name?
Gigness.
Where?
Oh, where is my property? East Sixth Street?
East Sixth?
Yeah. Sorry, that's the last name.
You said it.
No, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's right, like the, the Greenway Trail is like straight back to Seventh Street and then goes over a little bit wider on Seventh Street, I'm on the Sixth Street side of where it is, is wider. So it's just hard, because yeah, I could either go down from my roof, or like they said, which is tall, you know, taller than a single story, or climb over my neighbor's fence to get in, because they built a fence all the way down from Sixth Street all the way over and I can't, I can't get in there for repair.
Thank you.
They cited OSHA standards, so.
Would you mind giving us your address?
439 East Sixth Street. Yeah, they basically apologized and said, OSHA, I couldn't get, they weren't gonna let me on the construction site to repair. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carla Arno, and I'm a resident of Mill Creek. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I'm here for justice for Chello. As someone who has lived in three major cities, I've seen how connection between the police and communities can be transformative. It's difficult to see the lack of a community policing advisory board here in my hometown. I'm a single mom of two boys and I remember bringing them to the get-to-know-the-police events and the national night outs. Out west, when they were toddlers, the police were approachable and cared to get to know their neighbors. I'm encouraged by the Freedom of Speech Town Hall and the No Hate Town Halls and that this topic has been brought up in them, and I have hope for cooperation in that regard. That No Hate Town Hall was exceptional, and as Mimi said, it was heartbreaking to see Shetiria tearing up during it. And it's crushing to hear Shamel sobbing in the back of this room today. I'm an empath and a songwriter, and the line that comes to mind in my head is an expression of how exhausting it must be for the family to not get answers. Just as it, the family in Fresno, California must feel after the murder of Jeremy Sanchez by his parole agent, the heinous precedent and the list that Chello's name has been added to. Just as the families of too many unarmed black men across this nation who have been murdered by those sworn to protect them must be exhausted. The line is, "We are tired, we are tired of losing who we love. We are tired, we are tired of screaming. Enough's enough, 'cause enough is enough." The song is yet unfinished, as is the work of all this people in this room who are committed to justice for Chello. I've gotta go pick up my kids, but thank you so much for listening.
Good evening, my name is Malcolm Poyham, I'm from Erie, Pennsylvania. I'm gonna be brief, I just need about two minutes. I wanna say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody up here. Next week is Thanksgiving, so with that being said, we must take into account that a black man will not be with his family next week, because he was sadly taken away by someone, so we, we must acknowledge that his family will be without him for one of the most important holidays out of the year. We all get to sit with our family, our kids, and in fact, the man who actually took his life gets to sit with his family and his kids. So we need to kinda like reverse that. Something is wrong with that picture in my mind. I got a chance to learn some couple, a couple of things about the neighborhood, Chuck told me about it. It's funny that we can overlook a human life and we can actually sit and talk about some apartments going up, actually in the neighborhood that I live in that I did not even know those was going up. So kudos to whoever put that in place. But again, I'm at a loss for words, because the District Attorney has just not said anything to us, and I, I want her to understand that it feels like she has put Marcello- And I, I want her to understand that it feels like she has put Marcello's family on punishment and rewarded a murderer. He is still out on the streets. It's holiday season. Marcello had kids. After Thanksgiving comes Christmas. Will, will he still be able to walk around Erie, Pennsylvania as free as I am? This is an injustice. I feel that this is corruption at its finest. We all should be looking into this to see why is it taking so long? Not so much for her to even say there's some charges being brought, but for her to even speak to the family. So I'm, I'm sure they're not going to get a Happy Thanksgiving or a Merry Christmas from her, but they'll, they'll definitely get it from me. And I hope you all wish them a happy holidays. At the end of the day, we got to make this right. This is not right. This whole situation is wrong. We can sit up here and talk about zoning, the housing, the parking, but let's not forget that an unarmed black man was killed by his probation officer and this probation officer did not go to jail. He is still at home. He is about to enjoy these holidays. This is not right. I'm going to keep saying this every day. If you follow me on social media, I'm going to post every day until justice is served for Marcello Woodard. Again, next week is Thanksgiving. He will not be with his family. I couldn't imagine what they going through. This wasn't a, a death that was, they was prepared for. This was something that happened within three minutes. So again, my name is Malcolm Poyum. I will fight until justice is served for Marcello Woodard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Wachigoo, City of Erie. I'm here to support the continued fight and the chorus of voices screaming for justice for Cello. It's been more than a hundred days now that the community publicly has not gotten any updates on the situation with the case. And from what is being said, there hasn't been continual communication from the DA's office to the family. I don't think, I won't speak for the family, but I don't think they're asking for a decision to be made automatically, but they want to be in relationship with the decision makers who are, you know, handling a very major case that is going to impact their lives forever. And so going back to the zoning hearing we just heard and how a lot of people said this was their first time hearing about it, everything comes down to relationships and how closely or how much people put intention behind getting to know the people that they're trying to get involved and trying to work with. And it seems that there's a lack of effort to get to know and build a relationship with those who are being impacted by this situation. I think obviously this is not a city issue per se. It was not a city police officer who murdered Marcello. But at the same time, this is an opportunity for the city to reflect on the situation and think about future instances to prevent them. So in that case, I'm not aware of where this gentleman who killed Marcello lives, but there's something to be said that Erie needs to make sure or come back to a place where the officers are mandated to reside within the city so that at least we know that they are people from our community who are accessible. And another thing is, is that oftentimes, you know, you all are elected officials, you're mandated, mandated to be here, but they are also public servants. It'd be great to see them participate more in these conversations and speak for themselves because as of right now, we're speculating on their beliefs, values, and the way they move around in the world. And then lastly, this gentleman, we're waiting on an indictment. We're hoping that charges are pressed, but ultimately he killed someone and he should not be functioning as a public servant anymore. So it would be a great thing, and I know it's a challenging thing as for you as public officials, but to join the course of voices who are asking for him to be fired from his role. Ultimately, there's a video of what went down and he lied about what went down and he is still able to serve and be a danger to the public. So regardless of, you know, what the DA does or does not do, this is not a man who should be, you know, be paid by our public tax dollars right now and continue to be a danger to the public. And just lastly, because it's on my mind, and I know you all have different values and you all have different beliefs about different people, and this might be inflammatory to say, but it needs to be said. As a black person, it often feels when it's our situation, when it's our problem, people are very comfortable with ignoring and dismissing us and just letting things play out. But I know if this were a white person who were, was murdered, the situation would have been handled differently. And it's not right and it really takes the wind out of our lungs. So I just felt like that needed to be said. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm coming with a lot. My name is Cindy Triver. I'm born and raised in Erie and I live in Edinburgh now. My husband worked law enforcement for 20 years in the military. He works on the civilian component now as a dispatcher. We are a law enforcement family. We know how things are supposed to be. I've spoken on this before and we know how they are not supposed to be. And right now, this is not how it's supposed to be. I've been doing a lot of thinking about what the police want and what the community wants. And in researching the top five concerns of law enforcement and in researching the top five concerns of community, whether it be Black and Brown community or white community, they're very similar. Trust of public, trust of police. Accountability, accountability. Not enough law enforcement, not enough law enforcement and representation. Use of force in decision-making, use of force. Discrimination and racial relations, discrimination and racial relations. Those five are consistent amongst police, law enforcement, and the community. So there should not be a problem here creating a community board. We've been talking about this for five years, okay? We're talking about review boards that help give a voice to those who are concerned. They provide pathways to better relationships. They create better police persons. They create better relationships. They address every concern that the community has and the police have. So what is the problem? I'm, I'm a little confused. We're talking too about this funding, right? So we have these two SWAT vehicles, okay? One was purchased with $373,000 grant from the DOJ COPS program. COPS is the Community Oriented Policing Service. Let me tell you about some other grants that the DOJ COPS provides. They have four community policing program grants. They have two mental health grants. They have two de-escalation grants. They have school violence prevention grants. They also have directives on community police review boards. But we're taking money for SWAT vehicles, but we're not filing for any of these other grants? I'm not seeing like news breaking every night that the SWAT is involved with. I, I didn't know that we were, we had that many problems. I mean, our 40% of our budget is going to the police? I should be flooded with news about problems and police involvement. I mean, really? The, the ratio of crime does not even warrant that level of funding. It's disproportionate. We have also this $487,000 SWAT vehicle through the Commonwealth Finance Authority, which actually doesn't even supposed to finance police, but it goes through the PA Commission on Crime and Delinquency, which also has to do with recruiting of brown and black officers, mental health first aid, all of these other programs that these same programs are spending money on SWAT. And, and the programs, the things that we actually need here are not even being asked for with the same money. So I, I'm a little confused about this. There are so many that, I mean, this is just some, okay? I'll, I'll leave these here for you too because this is also some information on how this works. There's an organization called NACOL that is a national organization that helps set up boards. I have, I have two, three things that I want to say in closing. We need the citizen review board and it needs to be county-wide. We need to be like Fairfax, Virginia that has 1.6 million people, 67 incorporated towns and cities, and has created a, a board to cover all of that. There's no reason why we cannot do that with our size. I would like for this, this board to be called the Collaborative Hub for Equitable Law and Legal Enforcement: Cello. I see no reason why it shouldn't. If anyone can tell me why, that would be a bad thing. I'd like to know. In closing, I was personally told by the DA that she would be supportive of such a program after this investigation was over. I was told that. My husband was there. We were told that. I see no reason to delay this. If we have all of this attention and all of this money and all of this grants, I think we, it's time. If she says we can do it and she wants to do it, then let's do it. Let's get her to speak on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deontay Cooley. I'm lifelong Erie City resident. I'm here again continuously to speak to the same thing. We talk about justice for Cello. And ultimately, yes, the, the citizens review board of the police, like I'm not sure like if we're waiting for the transition of new mayor and new city council people to come in or why that hasn't been something that we need to discuss or have a conversation about. Because again, when we, the last city council meeting we had, we had, the room was full of police officers recognizing the officer for his community involvement. So you would think that there should be some type of interaction with the community and with the police. And it's very, it's also very interesting to me is like, I posted something on Facebook the other day and word got back to me that the police were upset about something that I posted for my involvement within the community. And I know me saying this might cost me an opportunity, but you all know, when it comes to speaking up or advocating for the community, I could care less about the personal opportunities that are afforded to me because it's unfortunate when you have somebody like myself who's trying to get more active and get more involved and I share a status on Facebook and then it's like, oh, this guy's anti-police. I, I was endorsed by the police when I ran for city council. My uncle Jerome Oldham retired from the Erie Police Department. So it's very interesting when it's like, you mention the police to the community and the police get upset, but then the police can come in and get community awards. You understand what I'm saying? And then people get upset when somebody mentions something like, well, the school and the police, a program is, is the school to prison pipeline and you advocate for that, but then you're scrutinized for things on Facebook and social media. But then also what it shows me is that the police are watching our social media. They are aware of our comments. They are aware of our concerns. They are aware of our cries and they're not involving themselves with us. And again, I'm not sure why, whose job it is, if it's the mayor or if it's you all, to come up with a review board or a citizen's review board for the police department, but I'm not sure why that has not happened yet when we allow those police officers to go into school and interact with our children. You know what I mean? We should be able to say, hey, what type of stuff are you talking to our kids about? Or these are some of the things that we want our kids to know. We should know some of our officers by name. I remember we had the DARE program. There was an officer in the school, like Officer DARE, and I still remember like the impact he had on me. When I see Officer Jim Spiegel, every single time I see him, have a conversation with him. Thank you, I appreciate the role you played in my life and impacted. But then even to speak again, when I talk about justice for Cello, it's bigger than just an arrest because we literally just sat through a public hearing and I believe what this lady sat here and said was, "It doesn't matter what the community thinks because the board approved it." So then when you think about something like that, it's like, who appoints these people to these boards? Is it the mayor who appoints these people to these boards? Is it you all who appointed these people to the boards? Because I do see now there's some new board appointments from Mr. Chuck Nelson, as well as I do believe Mr. Brzezinski. I'm not sure, I didn't flip the page, but to forsake of time, like, so we are, we are appointing people to boards who don't interact with our community, who don't understand our concerns and don't hear our concerns. And then it puts you all on blast because y'all sitting up here like, whoa, what's this? I don't know this, I don't know that. And she's just pretty much like, well, it don't matter what y'all say either. It's not a checkbox. The board said so. Who creates the board? But then it's the mayor and the mayor is sitting here like, I don't know what's going on. So when we talk about things that are going on in Erie and we talk about justice and you all feel like, when we come down here and say justice for Cello, do we just mean lock somebody up or arrest somebody? It's like, we are in a community of people who are, who are dying for change. We are thirsty for change. I've been coming down here for years. I've never seen a city council meeting this packed. I've never seen this many people come up here and speak. I've never seen it last longer than two hours, three hours since it has been, since the situation took place where Marcello Woodard was, was shot, killed, murdered. But it's like, I hope that you are gaining an understanding that people are tired of the way things were and you all need to start figuring out how you can start collaborating collectively with people in the community who are coming and stop using the excuse of, well, you people don't vote or you don't register to vote because we still are showing up. And the people who are voting for you, they have the same concerns as us because there are people here who are registered voters who show up. So we can't keep weaponizing us with that. But at the end of the day, the city of Erie is crying for change. There are people who are showing up. And then when people come and present things in front of you all, it seems as though our leaders or our people in position of powers are the one who are oblivious to our cries. And we keep, we have town hall meetings, we're having protests, and it's like, oh, well, because, I don't know, I really, I truly don't know what's going on at this point, but I'm, I feel like we need to have a review board for the police. I'm not sure why that's a problem. And when we come to appointing people on boards, let's stop appointing just our friends or people who popular and let's start appointing people who can actually have an impact in the community because it's, it's, it should be embarrassing. You should be embarrassed to sit here and not know what's going on when this is a board that you appoint. Like, so again, kudos to the incoming everybody, but things have to change around here and we're not going anywhere. It's 8:30 and we still down here in the chamber. So as you all can see, people are not afraid to sit here all night. If we got to stay here till midnight on certain days, I'm all for that too.
Thank you.
Hi, Council. My name is Chanel and I'm a resident here in Erie City District Two. I am from California originally and I've been in Erie for, it's my third year. For some reason, I love it here and I see a lot of potential. And I know it's been a long meeting. I just want to say, there's a book I read called Good, Better, Best. And it talks about creative designs and solutions that we can use in order to follow and better standards so that maybe right now Erie is in its good phase. I want to know what does better look like, right? What does best look like? I think often, as I've become more and more involved in the community, especially as I've started to spend more time on Facebook and YouTube, listening to these meetings with city or county council, there's a ton of people that have ideas about what's good or what's better or what's best. But as a community, especially as a council, I feel like we really need to talk about these things in this very simple framework because when we're talking about sidewalk snowplow removal, if we have different contractors that are working and they all have, everybody has different standards, is there a protocol to make sure that people know what is good, better, or best? Because if I was trained in one company and then trained in a different company, I'll bet you there's going to be different standards. I can say personally, I live on a one-way here in Erie and for whatever reason, the line for my street for the stop sign is only half of the one-way. It doesn't go across the entire one-way street. If you go a block down, that for whatever reason, stop sign has a line that goes all the way down. Very small thing, but from my window, I see quite a, quite a lot of cars driving up my street the wrong way. And from my window, I can see the other street and it doesn't seem like cars are going up the wrong way on Eighth, but they seem to consistently go down the wrong way on Ninth. And I don't mean to get into the weeds with any of that, but consistency here in Erie, even just the city of Erie, seems to be lacking. Standards, quality, these types of things really do matter and I'm hearing a lot of concerns about the effects of those things. I think we hear a lot of people cry out about how annoyed they are or upset, hurt, or devastated by the fact a man was murdered here. But when we think about Erie, you know, be honest with yourself, is this the best it could be? Is this good? Could we do better? I really hope that we inch towards better because it seems like that's what a lot of people want us to do, but if we're going to do that... But if we're going to do that, consistency, quality, these things matter. So I hope we're all paying attention to the details and making sure that people are in alignment as we move forward.
Is there any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, everyone. Bob Strasser, longtime resident of Erie's Lower East Side. Tonight, I want to take some time to do some acknowledgements. The first one that I want to do is kind of a sorrowful one in that I'd like to acknowledge the loss of a great asset to the city of Erie, and that is in the recent death of Mr. James Sherrod. He was not only great with all people, adults, but he really worked a lot with the youth of this community. I had the pleasure and interactions with him when I, during my working years. But more recently, in my retirement years, and this past year, I got to sit with him on a fatherhood group committee. And I really appreciated a lot of his thoughts and insights, how to address fatherhood and issues with our children in this community. And I want to offer my, mine and my family's condolences to his family and friends. My next acknowledgement wants to be to Mayor Schember and thank him for his service over these years and the, all the times that he extended his availability to me on some of my ideas and allowing me to interact with his different departments and staff. So I, I really appreciate that, and I hope that in the future, I still run into you in the community and we can exchange thoughts and ideas and stuff, so. And then my next acknowledgement, I want to congratulate Mayor-elect Daria Devlin. And I want to thank her for, going back to Mayor Schember, I want to thank you for guiding Erie through some really, really tough times, particularly the COVID disaster that, that hit everywhere but here in Erie also. But, Daria, I want to thank you for reigniting some excitement and enthusiasm for the future for this city. I hope that since we've survived COVID and the other things that we have in the past where Erie has barely kept its head above water, I think it's time now, and I know through your leadership and stuff, that Erie will rise up and be able to stand up above the waterline and move forward and really prosper with Erie and solve some of these issues and problems. So the next thing is I want to give an update on, I talked before about AI and technology and Erie and Erie County trying to get in on some of the monies that are coming to Pennsylvania and building of data centers and energy plants and stuff. In doing some of my research, I found that in some of the places in Pennsylvania and throughout the country where data centers are being built, but they're not building the energy plants alongside them, that the, the electricity prices are skyrocketing in those communities. So if we ever do get into that, hopefully, we'll be able to keep an eye. My personal thing is I think electricity rates are just going to skyrocket anyhow because everything's being diverted into AI and technology. But hopefully, Erie doesn't get hit that bad. The last one that I want to cover is Erie and a housing issue research. I found a project that's going on in Arizona. It's called Charlotte, and it's a, after Charlotte's Web, and it's a AI robotic 3D printer that's shaped like a spider that can go three stories high, and it prints out actual buildings and houses. They're able to build one house a day through using this type of device. And they're also planning on using this device when, when we go back to space, to the moon and possibly Mars, that they're just going to use this device to build the facilities on, on the moon and on Mars by using the materials that are up there, the soils and things. So it's, it's pretty amazing, and there's a lot of other amazing things happening. And as time goes on here, I'll try to keep yous all updated and posted. In the meantime, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and great holidays. Bye.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen to be heard? Is there any other citizen to be heard? Is there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Lower.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16566, Official Ordinance 762025. An ordinance appropriating a sum of $34,268 of program income generated through the home program for the following home M-18 projects. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16566, and now known as Official File Ordinance 762025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 762025 finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16567, Official Ordinance 772025. An ordinance appropriating a sum of $1,000 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from donations made by McDonald's 9/11 fundraiser. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16567, and now known as Official File Ordinance 772025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 772025 finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16568, Official Ordinance 782025. An ordinance appropriating a sum of $1,000 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from a donation made by the Irish Wolfhound Association of Lake Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16568, and now known as Official File Ordinance 782025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 782025 finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 792025. An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Erie that city determining to incur lease rental debt evidenced by the guaranteed revenue note and the maximum principal amount of $12 million to be authorized and issued by the City Water Authority in connection with the construction, alteration, and improvements to the public water distribution facilities in and about the city, including but not limited to the Sigsbee Pump Station, Sigsbee Valve, Valve Vault and Line Replacement Project, and paying related costs, fees, and expenses, specifying the realistic useful life of the project, authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, approving the form maximum guarantee amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances or parts of. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16571, and now known as Official File Ordinance 792025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 792025 finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 8016572, Ordinance 802025. Ordinance of the city of Erie, of this city of Erie determining to incur lease rental debt evidenced by the guaranteed revenue bond and the maximum principal amount of $3,032,351 to be authorized and issued by the Erie City Water Authority in connection with the construction alterations and improvements to the public water distribution facilities in and about the city, including but not limited to the Customer Side Galvanized Service Line Replacement Project Phase Three and paying related costs, fees, and expenses, specifying the realistic useful life of the project, authorizing and directing the appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, approving the form maximum guaranteed amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances or parts of. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16572, and now known as Official File Ordinance 802025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 802025 finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16573, an Official Ordinance 812025, an ordinance appropriating a sum of $1,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof of K-9 training. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16573, and now known as Official File Ordinance 812025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 812025 finally by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16569, an ordinance of city of Erie, county of Erie, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting the general fund and certain other budgets for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2026, and ending December 31st, 2026. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance 16569 haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16569 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16570, an ordinance fixing the tax rate for city purposes for the fiscal year 2026, beginning January 1st, 2026, and ending December 31st, 2026. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Number 16570 haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16570 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16574, an ordinance appropriating some $15,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditures thereof from K-9 donations sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. The Council File Ordinance Number 16574 haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16574 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16575, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part Nine, Utilities and Public Service Code, Title VII, Other Public Services, Article 951, Residential Refuse, Section 95109, Garbage and Refuse Collection Fee, increasing the quarterly collection fee from $306.62 per year to $322.93 per year. The annual collection fee shall be assessed against each dwelling unit and billed on a quarterly basis. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Number 16575 haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski.
No.
Flores. Nelson. Shaw. Titus.
No.
Troop. Witherspoon.
No.
City Council read and adopt Council File Number 16575 on first reading passes four to three.
Nelson, no.
Nelson, no.
No, no.
No, he said Nelson.
Nelson, no. It's four.
That's four, yeah.
The Brzezinski, Titus, and Witherspoon were the noes.
I thought Flores said no. I only say no because I said it every time that we've raised money this way. It always hurts the poorest people. That's all.
Okay, Council President, this takes us to new business.
Motion to move the balance.
It's been moved.
Any separations?
Yes, I have a separation request under.
You need a second.
I'm sorry. I thought we had a second.
Oh, I thought you seconded the mouth. Sorry. Second?
I'll second for the minutes.
Motion.
Motion to move the balance. Okay, separations.
Under contracts, I'd like to separate contract number one.
Under new business, I'd like to separate number one and two.
One and two?
Correct.
Any other separations?
Just the three and the two.
Three? Under new business? Any other separations? Hearing none. Moving the balance, the agenda, members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Number one, under new business. Resolved by the Council of Erie that Ryan Burquist of 527 Glevewood Boulevard, Erie 16509, is reappointed to the Erie Airport Authority by Councilmember Nelson for a five-year term expiring 12/31/2030. Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull this aside, not even for the people being appointed, but there was multiple people during public comments and even during the hearing today that brought up how the appointments work. I think Deontay specifically brought up me making these appointments. So just wanted to go over some of that process, especially Vanis still here, and I know Deontay follows up afterwards. This is for the airport authority. This is a reappointment. The airport authority has four appointments that are made by county council members, the county council members that are not in the city, and then, and then five appointments made by the city. So I had this, the privilege of making this appointment to fill a vacated term three years ago, and now I'm reappointing him to a full term. At the time that I appointed Ryan, for example, as you try to gather how an appointment works, and I'm leaving, so it's, you know, it's easy to figure, figure it out with any of these other folks too. But at the time that we appointed Ryan, that was when the city was getting involved, giving a large amount of money to the Fly Erie Fund. And there was some financial concerns about what was happening at the airport, so I wanted to make sure that our investment in the airport at that time was going to be a sound investment. So Ryan's a certified public accountant. He works at Erie Insurance. So it was, it was a very specific appointment at a specific time to fill the need that that board had at the time. But not just the need that the board had, which they gave me names for the needs they thought they had, but the needs that I thought represented the interest of the city residents. So I actually rejected the names they gave us and found an accountant outside of theirs. So Ryan's, Ryan's been a great member there. I'm the liaison of the airport authority, so I go to meetings every month. And, you know, he's consistent, very, very studious. He's always on the ball with the numbers. He chairs one of the committees, subcommittees there. So, so reappointing him after the last two and a half years he's been on there. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Resolution passes seven to zero. Number two, under new business, that Janelle Defusha of nineteen forty-two Lakeside Drive is reappointed to the City of Erie Blighted Property Review Committee by Councilmember Nelson for a two-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-seven.
Once again, same thing. This is, you know, I'm sure Janelle's not going to be watching this, and both in the case of Ryan and Janelle, I can't say that I've known either of them for longer than three years. Neither of them are people that I've known outside of being in office, they're not longtime friends or anything. She's an interior designer that was complaining about blighted properties in the cities and offering a strong opinions while actually having a background that was valuable to that particular board. One of my big things, especially in my other job where I deal with volunteers a lot, is, you know, a lot, a lot of times, people that, that are, that are coming in with complaints, I, at my other job, I'm like, oh, it sounds like you got a calling on your life, and then they get voluntold to do that job. So, that was what Janelle ended up being. It was at the same time that she was complaining about some blighted issues and having her background in interior design and some of the project management that she's done. She was a particular key member to bring onto that board with her experience. So, happy to reappoint her to that board. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Resolution passes yea seven, nay zero. New business number three, Erie City Councilmember Ed Brzezinski reappoints Heather Harrington, Esquire of forty-eight A thoroughbred Loop, Erie one six five oh six, to the City of Erie Water Authority as a representative of Mill Creek in her first full term, which expires January third, twenty thirty-one. Discussion?
Yeah, this is a no-brainer. Sometimes you, you do a good job. Last time I appointed her, this time, asking around to the other folks working with her, they all said wonderful things. So, we have a good lady doing a good job. Keep it up, Heather. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Resolution passes yea seven, nay zero. Proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement for MRC of South Park, Pennsylvania, co-stars for the purchase of playground equipment for Hagerty Park for the Department of Public Works at a cost of eighty-one thousand, six sixty-one forty. I did hear from the Assistant Public Works Director, and they said this park is thirty years old. They put another playground on the east side, and so they went by age, and that's how they picked.
I'm gonna, at this point, I had asked to separate it, so I would like to, I'd like to request a motion to table this until we, we can have more discussion on just the process in general.
Voting to table, members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Troop, Witherspoon. Motion to table passes yea seven, nay zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Thank you. Let's start with Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Bob Strasser, for mentioning James Sherrod. I think we, as a council, got distracted at the beginning and definitely was very, 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 very shocked to hear of his passing. I met him in two thousand seventeen and have always known him to be a great person, respectful, and a great leader at the Martin Luther King Center. I have not made any signing appointments, so if anyone wants to start something up as a street naming or something's plaque there, as the liaison for the centers, I would be most happy to sponsor something like that. The Martin Luther King Center has come a long way and is well-recognized in the our west Bayfront neighborhood. My daughter, who is forty, attended Bayfront Ballet classes there when she was four years old for a couple of years at the Martin Luther King Center. It was, and still is, a great place for culture and dance and history. I attended the Voices for Independence Day Disco Dance. I was at the Veterans Day Parade. Was a beautiful day, and the ceremony following at twelve thirty at the Jefferson always makes me cry as I see the veterans who are honored and remembered for their service to our country, and am grateful and thankful for the service members that I personally know who have devoted their lives to our country. I attended the Erie City Sewer Water Department, and as you can tell, the water and the sewer always have capital campaign projects going on, and unfortunately, that's why our prices go up as well, since we, as the City of Erie, have these things in our backyard. We end up paying the most and would gladly offer assistance to have the county increase theirs, but we've all been down that road before, so it basically lays upon the city. Most of our capital needs will continue along down the road for years to come as well. I was at Odessa's Place with Mo Troop and his mother. The mural there of Mo's grandmother is absolutely beautiful. It really makes a difference in the neighborhood, and I don't know how many Thanksgiving takeout dinners were available, but there was definitely a lot since they ran out of food. Wow, almost four hundred, unbelievable. So, it's places like Odessa's Place and the Erie Free Store yesterday, which I helped out. They had their ninth anniversary, and this was Brianna Adams' idea creation of this store that's been going on in their ninth year, and she has a board of members and volunteers, and yesterday, everyone there was able to get a free coat. And I got there at four o'clock for the volunteer time to help out, and the doors opened at four thirty, but when I got there, I couldn't find a parking spot and parked way down the road because people were out in the cold waiting, and it was really cold and a really, really long line, and they normally close their doors at seven, but didn't close them until seven thirty because of the amount of people. So, and that's just like one place. Odessa's Place on West Eighteenth Street, Erie Free Store on Thirty Second, West Thirty Second, and Elmwood area there at the church. And all the other places in the city that contribute and help our citizens is absolutely wonderful. My husband and I went to an event that Dave Tamilonis put on for his birthday over the weekend, and they raised a couple hundred dollars and lots of clothing and food for our underserved people to help UMA, and just really grateful for all the people and organizations in our community that continue to step up and help. And so, they're always needing volunteers for all of these things, and thank you. The city mission has been taking in people. The Neighbor's Place is going to be opening up quite soon, this, this week, so thank you to all the people who volunteer at that. Horace, our fire dog, along with the members of the Fire Department, are taking the polar plunge this Saturday to benefit Special Olympics. I did that several years ago when I was younger, and it was a lot of fun, but I could not do that today. So, I wish the Marcello Woodard family, the peace that is needed for their family and the strength to continue during this difficult time to spend a Thanksgiving without Marcello. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Troop.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank all the citizens that came down here today to speak. I'm not gonna name them all, although I wrote down all their names, and a couple of things about each one that they talked about. As I've said before in my committee reports, you, you have to have, no matter what side of the Justice for Cellos situation you're, you're on, you have to have respect for those who have continued to fight on his behalf and, you know, come down and stay on us and stay on the community and, and keep it alive. So, you have to have respect for that, no matter where you stand on it. Also, you know, I've, I've heard the Civilian Review Board brought up a lot. I've looked into that, those myself. Think a discussion about it should be had. I'm not sure what they're allowed to do, based on my research, but how much power they actually have, but it is something to, to discuss. I also want to wish my condolences to Mr., the, the family of James Sherrod. I've gotten to know through, through my musical side, I've gotten to know his wife and his sister-in-law, because they come to a lot of our gigs, really nice people. So, I'd like to wish their family condolences and the whole MLK Center condolences. I wasn't able to make the Carter Storaki ceremony, so I had another engagement, so congratulations to, to his family on the street naming. As Councilwoman Shaw said, I attended Thanksgiving event giveaway at Odessa's Place, which is located at six-two-eight West Eighteenth Street. You've probably seen the big mural up there next to International Bakery. That's a picture of my grandmother, who was a big community servant, fed a lot of people. People still talk to me about that today, and they were able to give out, my mother runs that place, was able to give out like almost four hundred dinners to people in the community. A lot of that is just out of pocket that she does herself, so. Also, from the downtown, they wanted me to, I reached out to my liaison responsibilities, and I just got one back today. They say we're gearing up for our holiday events, both Small Business Saturday and Downtown Delights. So, those are two things that are coming up, Small Business Saturday and Downtown Delights. So, you can look at their Facebook or website for the date. I think it says, "Pass along our appreciation for the support we get from the city, both council and folks from police, fire, public works, mayor's office, and more. Would love to invite folks from council out to the events." Small Business Saturday will be November twenty-ninth, ten a.m. to four p.m. Vendor Fair in Boston Store and Art Museum as well. Brick and mortar store sales and specials all day. First day of skating rink hours. Downtown Delights Friday, December fifth, from five p.m. to eight p.m. Tree Lighting in Perry Square with a visit from Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. Also, this year is our second annual window decorating contest throughout downtown from November twenty-ninth through December twelfth. Check out the storefront decor and artwork and vote for your favorite anytime during that span by accessing the form via QR code on the posters in the windows. And last thing I want to say is to Chief Trot, I'm gonna have to get ahold of you because there are kids at Erie High who love the Fire Department, and they ask me questions all the time about the Fire Department. So, it'd be great, maybe one day if we can get someone to come up and maybe just see some of the kids, because they really, they ask me a lot of questions about it, so. And I'm always gonna advocate for my Erie High kids. Most of the kids at Erie High are really good. I don't care what's out there on social media, videos. Ninety-five percent of those kids are really good kids, and I'm always gonna say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brzezinski.
Nice job, Ms. Troop and Ms. Shaw. Guys covered almost everything, but I have a couple of things. First off, belated happy birthdays to United States Marines. Semper Fi, brothers. Secondly, let's not forget that November is also, besides being a Thanksgiving month, it's a month of remembering the vets and making us all realize that we're all sitting here free because some gave up. Think about that at night. Maybe say a little prayer that we can continue to be free because of those vets. I don't want to get emotional about that. Three, Port Authority is bragging again. They went through their audit, and they passed in flying colors. And Ms. Lumsky never misses a chance. She knows what it's like to, to be fighting a fight, and she wanted me to pass on to Rue with the zoo.
That's good.
That the, the Port Authority has had a wonderful, wonderful partnership with Erie Events. They took over Eight Great Tuesdays and things like that, working hand and glove, so to speak, and making it happen. Tomorrow, we have, I'm liaison to the Erie Events also. We have a three-thirty meeting where their board will look over the proposed plan to save the zoo, basically, and it's because of people like Rue and Erie Events coming together and working hard. Mr. Betts, I don't want to embarrass you, but I knew of countless hours with the attorneys putting that thing together. Looks like it's gonna come together, and if it does, we'll have it on paper at the December third meeting. That being said, I got that done, Erie Events. I got Julie in there. All that's left is saying, "Happy Thanksgiving, folks." Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to mention the committee assignments that have had meetings so far for the month of November. On November eleventh at one p.m., the City of Erie Zoning Hearing Board had their monthly public meeting. Those meetings are on Facebook in our city YouTube. You can go back and re-watch it so you know what's coming down to City Council. They do try to go over all of the new development and everything of that nature that will be coming forward. On the eighteenth, the Planning Commission meeting had their meeting at one p.m. That's all so available on our YouTube and our Facebook. And then, today, we had our Environmental Advisory Council meeting at three p.m. You can go back and watch that on either the YouTube or the Facebook. I know that today's discussion- I know that today's discussion at the Environmental Caucus was whether or not the Environmental Caucus would support city council writing a letter to also support what's currently going on in the Senate resolution for council to call upon our legislators to create a community energy program in Pennsylvania. So me and Mr. Justin Mason, who had reached out to me a few months back, will be communicating in the coming days just so that I can have clarification on what council needs to do. Are we just writing the letter to support that? And then hopefully the Senate will pass it, because I know it's passed the House. But ultimately, the goal is just so that we can start doing community energy, solar power, from my understanding. So that's something the Environmental Caucus is working on, along with one-use plastics. They're trying to ban them throughout the city. So, I mean, those meetings are available. They tend to be kind of boring, but they are useful information for things that are coming down for council to approve. So you'll see the Environmental Caucus recommendation for those letters in the coming days, I'm assuming, because they just passed, well, they just all agreed to recommend council to write the letter, so that'll be happening. And that's all I really have to commit on. I do want to, I did also want to mention that since I was re-elected to city council, I do currently have two name signings available from the previous term that's going to be ending in the coming weeks. So I also would be willing to give a yard, I mean, not a yard sign, a name signing to the Sherrod family. That man and that family has dedicated a lot of community service to our community, and the passing of him is going to be noticed with MLK Center and all the community members who have actually worked with him. And I do want to make sure that that family understands that city council is deeply, deeply sorry for your loss, and we were shocked because we had just seen him not too long ago. I know that it is very devastating around the holiday season, which is why I also wanted to mention the cello movement. We do need our DA to speak up, let us know what's going on. I'm not quite sure what the lack of communication is. I don't know if they're communicating with the president or the vice president, but as far as us regular council members, we're still at nothing. No updates, no information. I know it was supposed to be after the election, but not sure what's going on. I do know that going into the holiday season, death is a very hard pill to swallow, and it does bring grief up very, very differently for each person. So I do want us to acknowledge that this family is grieving, the community is grieving. An unarmed black man was murdered in our community. And I know as somebody who was involved with the Black Lives Matter marches a few years back, we did try to get ahead of this, which is why the conversations for the community review board started five years ago. I'm not sure what happened with those conversations. I've also advocated for us looking for grant money outside of just material for the police department, grant money that would actually benefit our community members. Not quite sure what happened with those conversations either, so I'm happy that a community member did bring up the fact that there is grant money out there available for different things outside of material and hardware and salary, because it's a conversation I'm having. But when you're one voice of seven, it's kind of hard to get that conversation and move forward. So I'm looking forward to the new mayor, I'm looking forward to the new council members, and we'll see what the new year will bring. But I do know that the Justice for Cello movement, keep protesting, keep your action alive, keep showing up, because you not going away is going to put pressure on the right people, and it's going to also make those people very nervous when they're up for reelection. So, thank you.
I did all my work, but there's three things I want to touch base on outside of reporting that. First, with the hearing, I think it's getting really close to the point, maybe even a bit past it, as the community was concerned about the accessibility of the New Jerusalem neighborhood, to look at inclusionary zoning practices for waterfront residential. I think that that's the specific area that it's well justified, based on the kind of investment that we've been seeing. We've only been seeing that investment for like a year, you know, it's pretty recent for us to be getting much investment at all. But that particular area, I think it's starting to become something necessary for those future council people that Jasmine was talking about to worry about. As far as the passing of James Sherrod, that was, with my day job, we host short-term mission trips in the summer. We look for volunteer projects, and he was one of the first ones that we worked on with that. So from basically 2018 on, I would always hang out with him for a couple weeks in the summer and work on neighborhood projects. And then I think after a year or two of me doing that, he roped me into coaching wrestling at the MLK Center. And then, and, you know, and in the midst of that time, I had very little interest in politics. I'd voted every time, but I kind of had to be talked into it in 18. And so when I first got into politics, getting into office, a big part of the learning curve was that I have, you know, I have friends in the black community, especially with the coaching wrestling there and in the neighborhood, but I didn't have someone to like steer me on some of the more political elements of racial implications in the community. So James was one of the guys that I used to, especially my first two years on council, I used to show up at his office and have him explain things to me about every other month, probably, just because he was someone I could count on that didn't have, that wouldn't have an agenda with me, and then would just laugh at me if I said something stupid. So he's, you know, I mean, he would always host for Porch Fest, you know, I mean, it's, I haven't spent as much time in the last couple of years, because maybe I learned from the lessons he gave me in those first couple, but. And the playground, that was like our first thing that we did that actually produced something. So, a big loss in our community. The budget, we did first vote on that. We had a couple, we had at least one public comment that suggested that it was convenient that we did that after the election. I heard the county, the current county executive stated on the radio that it was convenient that we did that the day after the election. And obviously, if you go on social media, Dan Loughlin's posting about social media usually late at night. And I want to explain to people why we do the budget when we do it, those that are listening. It's because of the laws that Dan Loughlin's in charge of, state law. So if anyone's curious about why we do the budget the day after election, I promise you it's not political. If you'd like to see that changed to get more time, you can contact, instead of us, you can contact Dan Loughlin, because he's in charge of that law. It's a state law that at each year, the last stated meeting in November, that's this one, that the budget will be voted on for our first reading. It's nothing political doing it the day after election. So frankly, it's an idiot that's feeding uninformed people misinformation to keep his base engaged. His lack of comprehension of the budget process and policies is probably a contributing factor to why we didn't have a state budget for 135 days. But anyways, the last meeting of November, which is this one, we are to get a budget. It has to pass by December 31st. Twenty days before that, it has to be enacted. Ten days before that, it has to be in the newspaper. There's a process to this that brings us to, coincidentally, the day after elections. It happens even on non-municipal elections like that. So if you heard the public comment from the former Republican candidate for city council, she was probably informed by her county executive and state senator. Idiots that feed uninformed people misinformation to keep their base engaged. We could fix this real quick. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so to go into some of my liaison assignments, we had the EMTA board meeting on the 17th. To go in, they had their audit as well. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Ridership is down a little bit since last year. They're working on different strategies, also some labor shortages, just that they have positions open, they're working to continue to fill those. So if you know anybody who would like one of those positions, application is on their website. They did have their elections at this last meeting, and a new chair is going to be appointed, Dr. Ben Wilson. So congratulations to him and gratitude to Ms. Ashley Lawson for service, that she's been in that chair position for a few years. So thank you for everything that she has done there. So tomorrow is, I'm going to skip around here for a second. Tomorrow is Trans Day of Remembrance. This is the one time during the year where we have a vigil for the trans people who have been lost to violence in this past year. And I don't think many people know, but here, just in Erie, we've lost three people, three trans people, this past year. So I think that's important for us to hold, so we'll be doing that tomorrow. And in closing, I just want to say that I am, I want to honor the amount of emotional labor that many of our community members are doing, that you don't owe us to continue to show up and to bear your trauma in front of us, in front of the public, and to have to hold that weight. And that in and of itself is a trauma. And to navigate systemic racism and sexism continuously in a public setting while you are advocating for justice and equity is not lost on me. And I thank you, though it is not your labor to bear, and I am very sorry that we are continuously in a system that is requiring that of you. I am grateful that you have taken that heavy lift on and that you continue to show up. And I promise you that I am deeply, deeply committed to justice and to equity, transparency, and to making sure that things change. And that's not just lip service, that is what I do every day, that is how I live my life every day, and I'm committed to doing that. And I assure you that there are changes, I promise, that are coming. There are many things that we have in front of the solicitors now who are looking over to make sure, again, that we don't create harm when we bring them up for a vote, because the last thing I want to do is put another, put a resolution or a policy or an ordinance up here for us to vote on to just find out we've created more harm to the community. I don't want to do that, and I will stand in the way of any improper ordinance coming until it is vetted and it is ready. But we are, those are coming, and I am committed to that. Be gentle with one another, be kind. Holiday season is especially difficult, and we have many, many families right now who are holding very heavy hearts and who are grieving. So be kind to one another.
Thank you. First of all, condolences to James Sherrod's family. That includes the board of directors, his staff, and many members, especially in the Lower West Side area. I've had the opportunity of working with James on many occasions, especially during the summer. I had the opportunity of working with his predecessor, Walter Osborne, for many years. And I had the opportunity of working with the founder, Alex Thompson. The organization is under good leadership in the interim under Marcus Atkinson. We wish the best for Martin Luther King Center, and may they continue to do what they do in the community. Justice for Cello. I support that 110%. There, in my mind, there's no reason why notification hasn't been given to the family, if no one else, at least to the family. Even if you don't have solid information, communicate with them. Let them know what's going on. I say to the cello supporters, I welcome you into this chamber to voice your opinion, your dislikes, because we hear you. But also, it goes out on the air, and many others hear you. So I say, keep coming. As I was told tonight, you will be back, and that's a good thing. To our veterans, thank you for the service that you have provided us, the safety through many, many years and several wars. We thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief. This is past my bedtime, so, about an hour. I turned 75 last week, it was on November 13th, and so I'm kind of thinking it's probably a good thing I'm not going to serve another four years. I want to do something, but I still have to decide what that'll be. I'm going to give a speech to you, I'm going to try to keep it to five minutes on December 17th at the last one of these that I'll be at. Again, I'm working on that, and we don't welcome any input if any of you think you have something you want to tell me, you think I should say in that. Today was an extremely busy day for me. I started at 8:00 a.m. at the Erie Downtown Partnership with their monthly meeting. I always go to that, and it's very good. I got home for about 15 minutes before I had to go up to WICU, where they were, you know, had all that stuff being donated. It was money, and it was, you know, different kinds of, you know, just different kinds of things people could eat or whatever. It was pretty incredible. And also, I agree with all of you that I mentioned James Sherrod. I'm very sorry to lose him. I was kind of very surprised by that. He was, I think, only in his 60s. I'm planning to go to the Bruger Funeral Home tomorrow between 1:00 and 3:00, because I can't go between 5:00 and 7:00, because I have another meeting that evening. But thank you very much, and I enjoy working with you, and we have another month yet, so don't stop.
It's been a pleasure working with you, sir. Attorney Betts.
I have nothing.
Hey, thank you. One more thing, we have 5:30 tomorrow, we have budget session. Nothing further, meeting's adjourned.
City council adjourns at 9:37 p.m. Members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, and Troop.